Missioners, if you could raise your hands so we can get you set up.
Got almost everyone except for Felicia Shox is here.
Oh, no, you didn't. Nope, she's here.
Great.
And John Lindsay.
Jeffrey. Jeffrey Haney's joining now.
I see that right now.
So we definitely have a quorum.
Okay, did, did somebody say Angela Ward Hyatt is here?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I'm here. I'm, I'm under Schwartz Silver Architects for some reason.
Thank you. All right, well, we do have a forum, so.
Let me just make sure I've got everything ready.
And John Amadeo just came and Kirsten Hoffman. I saw Lindsay Mac Jones. Did you see her?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, there she is. Okay. Great.
Well, Jeffrey Gagnos joining.
Just give it another second to make sure we've got everybody in. Okay, Brad, I think we'd be safe to start.
All right, and the recording is started. Is that correct?
It is.
All right. All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Boston Landmarks Commission on May 13th, 2025 at 6:04 PM. Present are Commissioners Ja Freeman, Orlando Baraducci, Mac Jones, Hoffman, Gagnon, Amadeo, Ward Hyatt, Haney, and myself. Did I miss anybody? All right, and we go on then. Also present are members of the Landmarks Commission staff, Chelsea Blanchard, Staff Architect, Joe Cornish, who is Director of Design Review, Jennifer Coughler, Architectural Historian, Elizabeth Sherba, Executive Director of the Boston Landmarks Commission, Sarah Lawton, Preservation Assistant. Did I miss anybody on staff? Okay. Excuse me, you can participate in this hearing by going to the Zoom meeting link posted in our, excuse me, in our agenda online or by calling 301-715-8592 and entering the meeting ID, which is 98692200856. You may also submit written comments to us via email at blc@boston.gov. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the March 28th, 2025 amendment, extending the suspension of these provisions until June 30th, 2027, we are conducting this meeting online. Hang on, I sort of lost my place when the screen changed.
Brad, I'll just mention that Selena Berrios Miller joined us also.
Thank you.
Kathy Poteritas.
I'll make a note of that. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Boston Landmarks Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. We already sort of do that? No. This hearing is being recorded. All conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has been adjourned. If there are any media or elected officials present, I would ask you now to identify yourself by stating your name, title, and affiliation. Before you do that, you're going to have to use the raise your hand function in the Zoom platform so that you can be unmuted. So we'll give people a minute to do that. Okay, hearing none. And move on. Well, let me, let me first briefly read in the agenda. We're going to start with the ratification of the meeting minutes from April 22nd, 2025. We are going to hold an annual meeting of the Boston Landmarks Commission to elect a Chair and Vice Chair. We are going to hear. Oops, sorry. When we do that, my screen flips. But anyway, I can look at this screen. Going to review the Old Corner Bookstore and Cunningham House, including public feedback on the study report, and a vote to accept the study report and a vote to designate the Old Corner Bookstore as a landmark. We will then move on to 19 Kenton Road, Jamaica Plain. It's kind of an administrative item. We're going to revote to accept the petition for further study. We've already done that, but when we get to to the agenda item, we'll explain why. We're revoting, and then staff updates and projected adjournments. So first on that list is the meeting minutes of April 22nd were distributed to commission members prior to the meeting. And I invite any commissioners who have read the meeting minutes and would like to make suggestions or corrections to do so at this time. If there are none, I would entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes as submitted.
I'll make that motion, Brad.
Thank you, Justine. And is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Felicia. And, excuse me, voting would be alternate members, Mac Jones, Hoffman, Gagnon, Amadeo. So we'll start with Commissioner Ja.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Commissioner Baraducci.
Yes.
Commissioner Mac Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagnon.
Yes.
Commissioner Amadeo.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the meeting minutes are accepted. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which most of you been around for more than a year now how this works kind of quickly. We move to consideration of a Chair and a Vice Chair, and as of this moment, I have been nominated to continue serving as Chair, and Justine has been nominated to continue serving as Vice Chair. If there are further nominations, we can hear those now.
You're doing such a good job. No one wants to take it away from you guys.
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the nominations.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Kirsten. And a second to that.
I'll second Mr. John Amadeo.
Thank you, John. Voting will be Commissioners Berrios Milner, Ward Hyatt, Haney, and Mac Jones. So we'll start with Commissioner Ja.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Commissioner Baraducci.
Yes.
Commissioner Mac Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Berrios Milner.
Yes, thank you both so much for your service.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes, thank you. You both do an excellent job.
All right, thank you. Actually, Kirsten, I'm, I'm going to say I wasn't supposed to call on you, so hold that thought.
That's okay. No, I can't hold. I won't hold the last part of that thought.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I alternate between the alternates. Commissioner Ward Hyatt.
Yes, absolutely.
Commissioner Haney.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So since what does it say? Okay. Since no members present wish to make further nominations, the nominees Brad Walker for Chair and Justine Orlando for Vice Chair are elected by unanimous consent. Thank you, and that concludes our annual meeting and elections. And we move on to the actual content of the meeting. The Old Corner Bookstore. Tonight, we will be considering the designation of the Old Corner Bookstore and Cunningham House as a Boston Landmark. The Boston Landmarks Commission is required to hold a public hearing on all proposed designations following the completion of a study report, which describes the significance of the property and the standards and criteria by which future changes can be evaluated. The study report is made available for public review and comment for at least three weeks before the hearing. The purpose of the hearing is to hear the findings in the study report, to hear testimony from any interested parties, and to vote on the proposed designation unless the Chair decides to extend the vote to a later date so so that the commission can acquire more information. And I would now ask a member of the Boston Landmarks Commission staff to make a brief presentation summarizing the findings of the study report, and I think that's going to be Jennifer Gou.
Yeah, thank you, Brad. Could we go to the next slide? Thank you. On November 29th, 1994, the Boston Landmarks Commission accepted a petition to study the designation of the Old Corner Bookstore in downtown Boston as a landmark under Chapter 772 of the Acts of 1975 as amended. On February 14th, 2023, the Boston Landmarks Commission voted to accept an amendment to the petition to include the adjacent Cunningham House. If you could go to the next slide, I think it's more clear. Yeah, the building on the right there before you get to the parking garage. So the petition was amended to include that building as well. On April 23rd, 2025, the Boston Landmarks Commission posted a draft study report on the proposed landmark. To review the definition of a landmark from Chapter 772, it is any physical feature or improvement designated by the commission in accordance with Section 4 as a physical feature or improvement which in whole or part has historical, social, cultural, architectural, or aesthetic significance to the city, the Commonwealth, the New England region, or the nation. I will now read a short summary from the study report. The Old Corner Bookstore at 283 Washington Street is locally significant as the oldest extant commercial building in Boston and nationally significant as the former home of Tickner and Fields, a prominent 19th century book publisher that published the work of nearly every great American and British writer at the time, including Tennyson, Dickens, Hawthorne, Emerson, Thoreau, Longfellow, and Harriet Beecher Stowe, among many others. The business practices of Tickner and Fields also revolutionized the publishing industry at the time with new models of compensation for authors. More generally, the corner of Washington and school streets was a highly significant literary hub of Boston for decades. The Old Corner Bookstore was occupied by booksellers and publishers from 1828 to 1903, while the adjacent Cunningham House at 277 Washington Street on the right was occupied by booksellers and publishers from 1828 to the 1880s. I think there are two other slides if you just want to kind of cycle through them. The Old Corner Bookstore and Andrew Cunningham House are also architecturally significant as rare surviving examples of residential Georgian architecture in downtown Boston. Although Georgian architecture was the dominant style of the English colonies from 1700 to 1780, very few examples remain in colonial cities such as Boston that grew rapidly during the 19th and 20th centuries. The Old Corner Bookstore and Cunningham House are among the oldest brick buildings in Boston. Although the buildings have undergone numerous changes to accommodate changing styles and uses, they still display many character-defining features of the Georgian style. And if you just want to go to the last slide, therefore, Boston Landmarks Commission staff recommends that the commission vote to designate the exteriors of the Old Corner Bookstore and Cunningham House as a landmark under Chapter 772. The effect of this designation shall be that review by the Boston Landmarks Commission and/or commission staff shall be required for proposed alterations to the exterior envelope of the buildings. And the study report contains standards and criteria that have been prepared to guide future physical changes to the property in order to protect its integrity and character. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Can you tell us, please, has any written public feedback been received?
Yes, we received a comment from Paul M. Wright at UMass Boston, who is a historian of publishing and bookselling, and he wrote in to support the designation. And we also received a factual correction from Susan Wilson. She pointed out an error in the date that the Old Corner Bookstore building was last occupied by a bookshop, so we have made that correction to the report, and we have re-uploaded it to the Commissioner's shared folder and to our post on boston.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will move to verbal testimony. First, with any legal counsel representing any participant in the hearing tonight, please identify yourself for the record. Again, you need to raise your hand on the Zoom platform, which is a little button you'll find either at the top or the bottom, or press star nine if you're calling in on a phone. Any legal counsel on this matter? All right, seeing none, we will now take testimony in the following order as specified in the Boston Landmarks Commission regulations. And I will read the entire list of in order, and then we'll go back through it one at a time. First, we'll hear from elected officials, then from the Planning Department, the Boston Planning Department, and the Massachusetts Historical Commission, who have statutory review responsibility. Then from the property owner, then from those speaking or submitting written testimony at the hearing in support of designation, and from those speaking or submitting written testimony in the hearing in opposition to designation. And from those who wish to comment, not necessarily in support or in opposition to designation. And finally, from anyone with questions or rebuttals to the prior testimony. If you wish to speak when I call your category, again, please raise your hand in the Zoom platform or press star nine if you're calling in on a phone line. Please state your name and address and your relationship to the property. If there is a relationship, such as the owner or a user of the proposed landmark, and a butter or nearby owner or resident, a representative of a local organization or interest. Public comment would be limited tonight to five minutes for the petitioner, spokesperson, and the owner, and two minutes per person for others. Comments should be focused on the validity of the study report and the criteria for designation. We do not take comments about the ownership, the use, or future use of proposed future development plans for the property. So at this time, I'll first ask Commissioners to ask questions or comment on the study report. Hearing no Commissioner comments. Oh, I'm sorry. Before I did that, I was supposed to go through the list. I just misread this script. So let's, let's back up. I'll go through the list that I just read, and, and we'll start with comments from elected officials. Again, raise your hand or press star nine if you're on a phone. Any comments from the Boston Planning Department or the Massachusetts Historical Commission? Any comment from the property owner? Hi, Lisa. This will unmute you, I think. Oh, you're good to go?
Yes. Lisa Lewis, worked for Historic Boston, the owner, and we are fully in support of the designation.
Thank you. That was nice and brief.
There's nothing to add to what's already been said.
Love that. Testimony from those speaking or wishing to submit written testimony at the hearing in support of designation. From those speaking or submitting written testimony tonight in opposition. From those who wish to comment, not necessarily in support or in opposition. From anyone with questions or rebuttals on the testimony. All right, that gets us through the public comment. I will return to where I went down a little side alley I'm into go and invite commissioners. Perhaps they have questions now that they didn't have a minute. Jeffrey.
Just a quick comment that it may have surprised people that this wasn't yet a Boston landmark, because given its significance on so many levels, it's, I think, overdue for this recognition, and I was impressed by the quality and the thoroughness of the new study report, which built upon a previous very thorough historic structures report, but given the number of changes in the property and some of the tendencies and physical changes to the buildings, it's great to have this updated assessment of the architectural character now going forward so that as history of Boston continues to keep the building relevant, keep it able to generate funds to do its other work that they have this guidance and some pretty clear and straightforward guidelines. So just the support this obviously in, in all ways, and just commenting on the quality of the study report.
Thank you. Commissioner Orlando, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I'm kind of similar to Jeff. I just wanted to say that it, I think they did a really nice job of organizing the study report where there are differing features between the different structures. I think we have a few other properties coming up that have multiple components like this, and I thought this was a great example of how each detail was organized and given its level of information.
Any other Commissioner comments or questions before we move on? All right, seeing no hands raised. That concludes tonight's public testimony, and I would now ask Boston Landmarks Commission staff to review next steps.
As required by the BLC's regulations, written statements may be submitted for the record up until three working days following the hearing to the Boston Landmarks Commission at 20 City Hall Avenue, Boston, Mass. 02108. Statements may also be sent to blc@boston.gov. An extension of time for submitting written testimony and a postponement of the designation vote may be granted tonight at the Chair's discretion. The public record of the hearing is available upon advance request to BLC staff at blc@boston.gov. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. So given the testimony made tonight, no amendments to the study report are necessary, and the commission has the information needed to proceed to a vote. Even though the commission will vote on the designation tonight, staff will continue to accept written testimony for the record until this coming Friday, May 16th, 2025, 5:00 PM. The commission tonight will take two votes. First vote is to accept the study report for the proposed Boston landmark. And the second vote would be to designate the Old Corner Bookstore and Cunningham House as a Boston landmark. So I would now entertain a motion to accept the study report for this proposed Boston landmark.
I'll make that motion.
Justine, thank you.
I'll second John Freeman.
Thank you, John Freeman. Voting will be Commissioners Berrios Milner, Hoffman, Gagnon, and Amadeo. We'll start with Commissioner Ja.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Commissioner Baraducci.
Yes.
Second, Commissioner Berrios Milner.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagnon.
Yes.
Commissioner Amadeo.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the study report is accepted, and I would now entertain a motion to accept the designation of the Old Corner Bookstore and Cunningham House as a Boston landmark.
So moved.
Motion. Oh.
I'm gonna, I heard John Amadeo. What were the other person was con second?
I'll second that. Jeffrey Huni.
Thank you, Jeffrey. And voting will be alternates Mac Jones, Gagnon, Ward Hyatt, and Haney, and we'll start with Commissioner Ja.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Commissioner Baraducci.
Yes.
Commissioner Mac Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagnon.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt.
Yes.
Commissioner Haney.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The commission having voted to designate the landmark this evening means that staff will create a vote of designation document that will present the details about the property, a list of commissioners' votes on the designation, and the date of the vote by the Boston Landmarks Commission. This document will be sent to the city clerk, who advances it through the approximately 45-day mayoral and city council approval process. The mayor shall transmit her approval or disapproval to the city council within 15 days. The city council then has 30 days in which to overturn by a two-thirds vote a designation approved by the mayor once the designation document is returned. Oh, excuse me, approved by the mayor, period. Once the designation document is returned to the Boston Landmarks Commission by the city clerk, it is ready for the final step, which is recording with the Registry of Deeds. Thank you, and that concludes our consideration of the Old Corner Bookstore.
Brad, we just have Kirsten Hoffman with her hand up.
Sure, Kristen.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I don't know how that happened.
No.
Oh, okay. No worries.
And we're going to move on to 19 Kenton Road. The purpose of this agenda item is to revote to accept the petition for 19 Kenton Road in Jamaica Plain for further study. As a reminder, the property at 19 Kenton Road is currently under a demolition delay through Article 85. No information in the petition has changed since the commission originally voted to accept 19 Kenton Road petition on November 26th, 2024. That date fell between the date when the revised survey rating policy was presented to the commission and the date when the commission officially voted to accept the survey policy rate. Therefore, we are asking the commission to revote tonight in order to affirm the commission's acceptance of the petition to align with our most current policy. If the commission votes again to ignite, again, to accept the petition for further study, there will be an opportunity for those either supporting or opposing the designation to express their views at a later hearing. If the commission finds cause to reject the petition without further study, it may do so tonight by simple majority vote, provided that its reasons for so doing are stated in the decision and furnished in writing to the petitioners. So I would now ask Boston Landmarks Commission to prevent, excuse me, to present a brief summary of the petition.
Thanks, Brad. Nine, I think we have an image on the next slide. 19 Kenton Road in Jamaica Plain is an Italianate-style two-family dwelling constructed between 1843 and 1856 on land that had been subdivided from the estate of the prominent merchant and developer Isaac Carey. It was built on the cusp of the development boom of the mid-19th century. It was built on the cusp of the development boom of the mid nineteenth century that permanently changed the character of Jamaica Plain from agrarian rural landscape to bustling streetcar suburb. Uh, on November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, the Boston Landmarks Commission voted unanimously to accept this petition for further study. Thank you.
Right, and I'll add this note for those of uh, those people who are in the public audience uh on the call this evening. We're not taking public comment on this matter. Um, and I would entertain a motion to accept this study report for further study.
No moves. This is John Freeman.
Commissioner Freeman, thank you.
I'll second John Amadeo.
Thank you. Excuse me, and voting would be alternative commissioners, alternative commissioners Barrios Milner, Hoffman, Amadeo, and Ward Hyatt. We'll start with Commissioner Ja.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Commissioner Baraducci.
Yes.
Commissioner Barrios Milner.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Amadeo.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, so the petition is accepted uh now in the appropriate order. Um, and that concludes this matter, and we move on uh to staff updates and then commissioner concern. So I'll start um with Elizabeth Sherva, who is the director, if I have that right, executive director of the Boston Landmarks Commission.
Thank you, Brad. Um, just to give everybody an update, the White Stadium Subcommittee will be meeting on site on Friday, May sixteenth um at nine A M. to review finish samples. All commissioners are invited to attend if they would like. The meeting will, has been noticed, and the details can be found on the B L C website. The next Boston Landmarks Commission hearing will be Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, with the design review meeting at four P M. and the business hearing at six. Thank you, Chair Walker. That is all I have for this evening.
Thanks, Liz. Any other staff members have something to comment on or share?
The only thing I would say is that if anyone has hard hats and safety vests and wants to come to that um site visit, please bring them because there's a limited number of them on site. So um I'm sure you all have them in your offices somewhere. Thank you.
And I, I would certainly like to add my thanks or thanks on behalf of all the other commissioners to the commissioners who are serving on the White Stadium Subcommittee. I know that's been quite a few meetings and some very important work. So thanks from all of us. Other staff comments, concerns? Commissioner comments, thoughts? Jeff Gonyo.
Sorry to speak twice, but I just wanted to thank Kathy and Liz and the staff for hosting such a great party at City Hall last Wednesday evening. It was really fun to be in the building and to see it used in a fun way and to hear the mayor speak so eloquently about its preservation. So I know there were some commissioners there, um, and it was just, it was a great event and a long time coming. So thank you for all of your hard work on that.
Thank you for coming.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, I will accept then a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Thought no one wanted to leave. Was that, was that Jeff Haney uh seconding?
David Baraducci.
Sorry, David. And that's a voice vote, so all in favor, please signify by saying.
Bye.
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 Any nays? We're good. Thank you, everybody. That was very quick and efficient. We'll see you in two weeks.
Take care.
Thanks, Al.
Good night, everybody.
Bye bye.
Good night.